We are on item number four, the preliminary 1920 operational budget. And Julie, hi.
Hi.
Come on up. Hi, David. We're ready for you.
Thank you. So, Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is Julie Underwood. I'm the Chief Financial Officer. And with me is David Munoz. He's a Senior Manager for our Financial Planning and Reporting Division of the Financial Services Branch. And today, we'd like to present to you the key changes in the preliminary operating budget for fiscal year 2019-20. And so, in developing the budget, staff performs a review to determine what funds are needed to support the goals that are set by the Board in the strategic plan. And for fiscal year 2019-20, the key changes in the operating budget that we'd like to talk with you today about closely align with Goal Three of the strategic plan, which has specific goals, including sustaining critical business processes and systems, oversight of the risk and enterprise compliance, as well as continuing with the implementation of the new Pension Administration System Pension Solutions. So with that in mind, we wanted to give you a first look at the total preliminary budget, which is projected at $541.9 million. Of this amount, the operating budget is projected at $285.1 million, or 53% of the total budget. And that's comprised of three main categories: pension and general administration, capital projects, and internal investment administration. Now, for the external investment administration, those costs are projected at $256.8 million, or 47% of the total budget. Now, these costs are separated out from the operating budget, as they're 100% continuously appropriated. So for today's discussion item, we'd like to get your feedback on the key changes in the operating budget that are appropriated by the Board. And so, these key changes represent a $7.4 million, or 3% net increase, in the total operating budget as compared to the prior year. And this is primarily attributable to four items. The first one is wage escalation, and that's projected to increase the budget by $13.7 million. And that's primarily for staff salary and benefit increases. State mandates are projected to increase the budget by $4.8 million. And this is for the mandatory payments that are assessed by the state. Organizational growth is projected to increase by $1.1 million. And this is for a request for eight staff positions. And then, the Pension Solution Project is projected to decrease the budget by $12.1 million. And this is a decrease in the original spending authority over the prior year. And so, we wanted to give you just a little bit more specific detail for each one of these areas.
Great, thank you. As Julie stated, there are four primary components that are driving the change in the operating budget, the first being the wage escalation. Now, these are salary and benefit increases for existing employees here at CalSTRS. The salary component of this is $8 million, and the benefit component is roughly $5.7 million. With regards to salaries, these are primarily driven by collectively bargained union agreements for rank-and-file employees. And much of those economic increases have also been extended to supervisors and managers as well. From the benefit perspective, I would just highlight that a lot of the civil service benefit package is salary-driven in nature. So, as you see salaries increase, you'll see sort of a lockstep increase with benefits as well. I would point out to you that there is a new benefit cost for employers and employees. It's for an existing benefit that's actually been around for a long time. We know it as retiree healthcare; others know it as other post-employment benefits. But historically, that benefit was funded 100% by the general fund appropriation. After negotiations with the various bargaining units, this particular benefit is now shared, the shared normal cost between both the employer and the employee. So, included in this benefit increase, you're seeing a 1.1% payroll increase specific to that benefit. Moving on to the next slide. The next category really impacting the operating budget has to do with state mandates, the first one being Senate Bill 84. So, just as a brief reminder to the Board, approximately two years ago, Senate Bill 84 was enacted. And basically, what that did is it allowed the state to make a supplemental payment to CalPERS for employer retirement contributions. And this funding came out of the Surplus Money Investment Fund that is managed by the State Treasurer's Office. And really, the policy behind this was to bend the cost curve for future retiree rates, employer-retiree contribution rates. So, you know, absent this supplemental payment, agencies such as ours would have likely anticipated a larger employer-retirement contribution, you know, absent this particular legislation. So, as part of SB 84, it requires every agency to pay back their proportionate share of that $6 billion supplemental payment. We are estimating that our 1920 payment for that particular legislation will be $3.7 million. That's a little bit fluid. It is tied to the two-year treasury, and there's some other nuances to the repayment. But we're thinking we're going to land right around $3.7 million for that piece. The next component of state mandates has to do with prorata. And prorata really has sort of two components to that. The first has to do with central services that are performed on behalf of our control agencies here at the state. So, think of agencies like the Controller's Office, the Treasurer's Office, the Department of Finance, CalHR. They're all performing work on behalf of all of the state agencies, and they need to recoup those costs. And this is the budget mechanism for them to do that. Now, the other component to prorata has to do with retiree healthcare. And I don't want to confuse this with the benefits that I described in the previous slide. So, for state, not state employees, but for retirees of the state that are currently retired and that have earned a benefit, the state is still paying those healthcare premiums for those retirees. And so, the cost of paying those healthcare premiums is also recouped through this prorata process. So, our portion of prorata for the 1920 year is approximately $1.4 million. There's also another small piece here for state mandates, which is just some change in some fund-to-fund transfers. So with that, I'll move to the next slide. The next piece relates to organizational growth of CalSTRS. Now, these are new positions, new resources, and new initiatives that the organization is undertaking. And that really has impacted four different areas of the organization, so I'll just go through each one of those briefly. The first one is corporate governance. This is a purely workload-driven request. This is for one position and roughly $111,000. This would be, the staff would actually be maintaining our engagement-tracking database. So, as corporate governance activities increase, this person would be managing the database, recording all communications between our staff and the various company stakeholders and other fund managers that we work with. The next area of the organization impacted would be external affairs. This is for one position and $120,000. And this would be to develop a public engagement strategy to highlight areas of assault weapon concern. So, as you recall, back in May of 2018, the Board had formally approved resources for this particular issue. So, what this is doing is actually taking that Board action and incorporating it into our budget. The next piece is for legal services. This is two positions and roughly 403,000, excuse me. And this is really doing two things. The first, it's addressing increased litigation workload that we have in the Office of General Counsel. Just looking at some of the statistics, over the past few years, we've had about a 22% increase in cases that need to be litigated. Not only is there increased litigation, but also the complexity of these are increasing as well. And when they get to a certain level of complexity, we've actually been outsourcing some of this work to third-party law firms. So, really, the goal of this proposal is, A, address the increasing caseload, but B, also start really becoming subject matter experts in some of these nuances, these teachers' retirement law nuances that are being litigated and that we've had to actually outsource in the past. The final component of the organizational growth has to do with the Enterprise Compliance Oversight Program. This is, the ask is four positions and $470,000. I would just remind the Board that in February 2018, the Board had acknowledged the need for CalSTRS to actually stand up an enterprise-wide compliance program, and these are those resources. So, these four people amongst other activities would be documenting specific regulatory requirements, creating uniform criteria to measure compliance, establishing a centralized policy library, and also establishing a process for dealing with new laws and regulations that will be impacting CalSTRS. So with that, I'll move on to the final component impacting CalSTRS' operational budget. And this has to do with Pension Solution, and it's actually a reduction of $12.1 million. And so, before we get into the details, I just want to acknowledge to the Board that a reduction in Pension Solution appropriation may seem counterintuitive, especially with some of the discussions that we've been having surrounding CGI contract amendment and some of the other timelines that Pension Solution is on that has been shifting, all of which have a fiscal impact. So, I think the best way to explain this, given how it might seem contrary, is with the actual graph in front of you, the bar graph here. So, if you think about it, back in 1415, the Board approved $213 million. But all of that money was not allocated at one time, because projects of this nature take a long time. You don't always know exactly how much you're going to spend in each year, but you'll know you'll need some in each year for the project timeline. So, if you added up each one of those boxes, you would get to $213 million, which was the original appropriation authorized by the Board. And each year, what happens is, is that you actually, from your base budget, you remove the prior-year appropriation that was granted, and you put in the new one. So, in this circumstance, if you look at 1819, the Board had authorized $17.9 million. And in the budget year, which we're presenting to you today, that appropriation drops down to $5.8 million. So technically, what that does to a budget display is it actually shows a negative $12.1 million. But that's really not the whole story, because we're actually planning on spending more than $5.8 million in the budget year. We're planning on spending closer to about $18 million. And the way that you reconcile between what is actually displayed on our budget versus cash out the door or expenditures occurred is really from two sources. The first is, is that looking back at the chart, if we didn't spend all of the money appropriated in some of those prior years, we can actually reach back and use some of that in this current year. The second piece is, the Board authorizes CalSTRS a technology appropriation every year of $18.5 million. So, some of that funding as well helps reconcile between the $5.8 million and also the $18 that we plan on spending again in 1920.
David?
Yes?
If we're reaching back to a prior year, how do we show that on the current budget?
Good question. It's not shown on the current budget. The budget only shows, you know, the, right now, it only shows the current year. In the budget year, we have a prior-year display. So, at some point, you'll actually get to see actual expenditures that occurred in the year. But I would also add that when we spend money from a prior-year appropriation, it's actually hitting another appropriation that's no longer visible anymore, so...
And, excuse me, if I could just add, for the November comprehensive budget that we will bring back to you, we're going to have some appendixes that will be attached that will include some of that additional detail, so that you can see all of those flows moving forward.
Super, thank you.
Okay, so with that, the budget presented today, again, is preliminary. So, we still need to finalize a few estimates for salaries and benefits and the prorata assessment. But again, as I mentioned, we'll have that final budget for you to review back in November, and it will be comprehensive. So, it'll be more than just these key changes that we're presenting to you today. It'll be the detail that's provided for everything that makes up the entire budget for you to review. So, what we're asking for you today is just really to get your feedback on these key changes, so that we can incorporate your input into that final budget that we'll present to you in November.
All right. Does anyone have any feedback for Julie at this point? Harry?
So, in the preparation for preparing these documents, have you been in communications with the investment staff, given the conversations we're having about potentially implementing collaborative models, which would require additional people, and what those scenarios would look like in multi-year plannings? Or not yet?
Well, we're certainly having discussions with the Investment Department and all of the departments within CalSTRS in terms of what their budget needs are. And we're certainly accounting for that if we feel we need to in this budget that we'll present in November.
And also, I think, in the short run, Chris has enough flexibility within that initial five-year, the 50-position addition we got to give you flexibility to make changes in the first couple of years. As Chris mentioned yesterday, if we go down that path, you know, I think the next step is meeting with Finance and discussing amending that plan. But this is really just one-year-out kind of look, so you've got enough flexibility to deal with any scenario for investments by shuffling the positions around.
Given my time on the Board, I should probably know the answer to this question. I probably shouldn't ask it without knowing the answer. But does the fund, I know there's carryover revenues from year to year, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And where are we?
And so, that's something I'm starting to learn as well, how those things carry forward. And what I'm planning on asking staff to do in the comprehensive budget in November is, again, have additional appendixes, so that we can show you exactly what's carrying forward, so that we can see everything like a total spin plan, not just what we're required to do for the Department of Finance, but what is carrying forward from all these different appropriations, so that you can see what we're truly planning on spending in fiscal year 1920.
It's really appropriation, you used that word revenue, I heard you say, but it's really the appropriation that we're handling on a carried-forward basis.
Thanks for that. And I should have begun my comments by welcoming you, Julie, formally in front of a public meeting. And David, I don't think you've presented before to us in Welcome as well, but I certainly want to welcome Julie in your new role on the floor to work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harry.
We got the coveted Friday afternoon slot.
Yeah. Let's make this a two-hour item.
People just beg to have this.
Oh, no.
All righty, are there any further questions? Thank you. And thank you for your part in helping us get back on track.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All righty. Hi, David.
Hello.
Long time no see.
Yes. And more fun for a Friday afternoon.
There you go.
So, okay, good. So, I'm not Julie, just to make sure. I'm sure that my name will change shortly. Good afternoon, everyone. I know it's been a long day for everyone. So, this is going to be the one of many discussions we're going to have over the course of the next few months over our funding plan. As you know, we are required by statute to provide a report to the legislature due no later in the next June on the progress of our funding plan. So, as you know, in 2014, when AB 1469 passed, this was a critical piece of legislation for us. It set us on a path to reach full funding. It was the result of years of negotiations that led to an agreement by all of our stakeholders, members, employers, the state, to all share in the responsibility of paying down our unfunded liability. And as you know, contribution rates for the employers have been increasing over the last few years. And we are fully aware of the fact that some employers are struggling to handle some of the higher contributions that were put in statute. And, you know, we have heard, some are saying, you know, could something be done? If you paid attention about a year ago, the Haas Institute at UC Berkeley issued a paper that said that it is not necessarily for a pension system to be fully funded long-term to survive. So, you have, you know, you have some that would desire to have lower contributions. You have this UC Berkeley paper. If you ever listen to the media, it's not uncommon, you hear it all across the United States, very often, 80% funded is listed as an acceptable target that a pension plan, you know, could try to reach for. So, what we wanted to do, which is why we called it the 80% pension funding standard myth, we just wanted to put kind of a background behind this whole, like, this whole myth around 80% funded. So, in the agenda item, we provided a link. And the one thing I wanted to make sure you all know is, the actual profession has never endorsed that myth. So, in fact, in 2012, the American Academy of Actuaries issued a paper called "The 80% Funding Standard Myth," where basically, the highlight of this was that no one should ever look at a single point in time to assess, or a single number to assess, you know, the financial strength of a retirement system. The key is always to look at where is the plan heading. And I wanted to start my presentation with this chart. And this also goes to something, I think, a couple of months ago, maybe last year, Sharon called me one afternoon, and she was asking me, like, I hear from members, I tell them when they see we're in 63% funded, 65% funded, they get worried. And what I tell people is, you have to look at the pattern. So, what I wanted to show you here was just simply where we were, if you go back, you know, we, it took many years for CalSTRS to obtain the funding plan that we have in place today. But in 2009, when the evaluation results were presented to the Board, this was the first time in a long time where the actuaries came and told you, they rang the bell, the alarm, and said, "If nothing is done, we're going to run out of money in the future." But if someone just looked at the funded status that day, it said we're 78% funded. Today, we're 62.6. If you just look at this, you would think, wow, we were so much more better off in 2009. But now, look at the lines. In 2009, we were basically telling you, if nothing is done, we're going to run out of money by 2043. Today, you know, thanks to the agreement that was passed with the higher contributions from members, the state, and the employers, we are on path to reach full funding. But that full funding is only going to occur if we can collect the contributions that we need to go there. But that's, to me, anytime someone looks at the funded status and gets worried, I tell them, you have to look as to where we're heading, because if you just look at the history of CalSTRS, you may have thought we were perfectly fine in 2009, but as this shows here, we were not. So, that's my main message to you, where, always look at where we're heading. So, any questions? Okay, next. So, the other thing I want to mention to you, so the rest of the time, we're going to be talking about 80% funded. And the main point I wanted to make with this chart, and we sort of made the point last year, we have to keep in mind that our funding plan, the way it is written today, is set to expire in 2046, at which point, it would revert back to the fixed contributions that are set in statute. And it's important that, once they go back to a fixed level, if we're not 100% funded, or last year, I think in the risk report we presented to you, we mentioned, if we're not at least 90% funded at that time, we're going to start to revert back on a downward trajectory. So, I just want to show you again here that if somehow we are 80% funded in 2046, or if that was the goal, something would have to be done beyond that, otherwise, we would start to go down again.
David, can you, I'm actually, I'm cheering for Dana. Can you remind us of the rates, just to be specific, the rates that they would revert back to in 2046?
Yes, so basically, in statute, the employer rate would revert back to eight and a quarter. That's set in statute. The members have gone up. And those, I believe, with, the way the law is written, the members would stay where it is, at about 10 and a quarter, so just above 10%. And the state would go back to its base rate of 2%, 2.017, 2.3%. So, about 20% is what would be coming to the system. Okay?
That's interesting, so the employer reverts back, but the employees stay...
It's just the way that the law was written. So, the, and you remember that part of the increases for the member rate was in exchange for the vesting of the 2% improvement factor that we talked about two days ago. So, it makes sense for it to remain, to remain in place, since it was in exchange for, if you want, a benefit. So, now, anytime we talk, one of the points I want to make also here today is, anytime you talk about, okay, we're having a hard time to pay something today, can we have lower rates, and we'll pay for it later? I think we all know what the consequences of this are. The cost, anytime you delay something, the cost implications, it always means you're going to pay more down the road. So, here, we just want to show you an example. What if someone were to say, you know what, CalSTRS, you're going to be funded, we're going to change the funding plan, and the contribution rates are going to be set to reach 80% funded? And as we showed you previously, if these contribution rates revert back to the pre-funding plan level after 2046, we're going to go down. So, what we wanted to do is say, okay, what if the funding plan in perpetuity was set so that we always remain at 80% funded? So, that comes with that Haas Institute, the argument that it would be fine to always be at 80% funded forever. What we want to show is, what are the cost implications of this? I don't think anyone will argue that, yes, you will save money for the first 20, 30 years, you're funding toward a lower target. But beyond that point, just to stay at 80% funded, you're going to need additional contributions. And what's, I think, for us, sometimes it's obvious, because we keep looking at all of the numbers, but the point I wanted to make is, over time, just to stay at 80% funded, every year that goes by, it's going to become more and more expensive just to stay at that level. The contribution rate needed just to stay at 80% will keep increasing over time. It's hard to tell on this graph, because of the slope, but just to stay at that level, that contribution rate will start at about 4%, then it will become 4 and a quarter, 4 and a half, 4 and 3/4, 5%. It will keep increasing. Sometimes, a good example I tell to people is, just imagine, you get your credit card bill, and, you know, they like to charge high interest rates, like 20% a year. If you had $1,000, and you decide, you know what, I'm not going to pay it, or I'm just going to pay the minimum amount, which is like not paying it, it's going to go up by 20, it's going to go up like 20%. I doubt that your salary is going to go up by 20%. It may go up by 2%, 3%, 4%, 5%. So, now, if you see, a year later, the growth in that debt has far outpaced the growth in your salary. This is how people can quickly get into debt issues, because your debt fast, you know, exceed your growth in your salary. This is sort of what we would see here on a smaller scale. Basically, what would happen is, the growth in our unfunded liability would exceed, just to keep it at 80% funded, it would exceed the growth in the overall payroll of teachers, resulting in an ever, you know, larger amount or percentage in order to pay it down. That's kind of the point we wanted to make, is we're in a situation where each time you delay payment, it just gets more and more and more expensive down the road. So, yes, it's going to save you money short-term, but I think we always have to remember that, especially for our system member, every time we bring the risk report, we talk about maturity of our system, okay? The more retirees we have, you know, as we become even more mature over time, all of these things become more expensive as a percentage of payroll when we have unfunded liabilities. So, that's why you're always better off to pay it off earlier. You have an inquiring look.
No, I think I'm making some correlations of, I've tried to explain to our membership why our unfunded liability is growing, even though we have the funding formula, solution, and why it's taking so long before that reverses. We haven't, it's still growing, because we haven't added enough volume and money.
Correct.
So, we, it's going to grow until we hit that tipping point, where we finally have accrued enough revenue that it tips it back to where it starts being reduced.
Correct.
Is that the best way to try to explain it?
It is. And I think the other message I would always tell folks is, and I think we always put it in all of our communications, is this was, it was part of the funding plan. As part of the funding plan, there was a desire to let everyone prepare over time for these higher increases. So, the contribution increases were staggered slowly over time. But what that meant is, there was an implied, and hopefully, it was clear to the legislature. We made it clear in all of the projections of how the unfunded liability was going to get paid, but it was built into the funding plan that to allow people to prepare, it was going to result in a gradual increase of the amount owed until it gets paid down.
Right, it's just hard, it's hard to explain. It was like I was trying... And it was like I was trying to explain it in the same manner I tried to explain the jaker, because it's really similar, at least in my mind. And so maybe someday I'll ask you for a little paragraph and blurb that I can just read instead of try to do it on my own. And then what you're talking about here in front of us is, is part of the reason why in your write-up, you say that it'd be a thirteen point one contribution all the way through two thousand and forty-six.
And all, and, and then beyond that, that thirteen point one would basically.
Continue.
It would continue. It's just a, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then, now I just wanted, sometime a picture says it all. Just wanted to show you again, so you've got two circles here, one will remain the same, the other one will, will, will change over time. I just wanted, and again, don't be taken aback by the size of the numbers. So the two hundred and seventy billion dollar you see on the side, this is what we expect to collect between now and two thousand and forty-six to pay down the one hundred and seven billion dollar unfunded liability we reported to you. And this is not uncommon. And so, so you can see, we're going to end up paying about two and a half to three times what we owe. And this is not uncommon. If you've ever gone and gotten a mortgage, and if, if you see what, what, what the banks tell you between a fifteen and thirty-year mortgage, they usually tell you how much you'll pay over time. If you ever done the, if you ever look when you get a thirty-year mortgage, what you pay over time is often two to three times the value of your mortgage. We, we basically have a thirty-year mortgage. So, so you can see, this is where the two hundred and seventy million dollar comes from, billion. So what we want to show you in the orange is if we, if we aim for eighty percent and we keep it there forever, over the, through two thousand and forty-six, we would save about fifty-nine billion dollars. But these savings would quickly disappear. Ten years later, we're almost exactly the same, two hundred and fifty-nine billion. And under ten years later, we now have paid three hundred and thirty-one billion. And through two thousand and seventy-six, four hundred and forty billions. So again, it's just to show you that, yes, it would save money short term, but at the expense of much higher contributions down the road. So that's just, just wanted you to graphically see how, you know, yes, you save money short term, but as you all know. Correct. And lastly, and again.
Hang on, hang on a second, because Sharon did have a question back when I made my comment.
No, no problem. I was just going to add what Dana's question is, because I think it's important because we interact so much with other colleagues, other teachers. It, it was lowering our assumed rate of return too, right? That, you know, that also took us down to, I think we were at sixty-eight, and then it kind of, just that one decision took us to sixty-three point seven.
Mortality.
So I think, and again, that's hard to explain, explain to people, but, but I think that's important to mention, just because a lot of other institutional investors were making that choice. But the other con I was going to make is, is e- even before the funding plan, you know, got sealed by, you know, got approved by the governor, it, it was a long, you know, a long conversation that we've been having since before my time on the board. And I do think, as a person who bargains with my own district, there was a lot of, I think, communication with districts around, this is the plan, this is what's going to be happening. And then there was a gradual increase in contributions, both to teachers and members and to employers. And I think what I struggle with a bit right now is it's sort of like, this is a shock or this is, you know, causing issues for people's budgets, which I partly believe, but I also do collective bargaining and sometimes I, I kind of, I, I know what some of our districts' budgets have, and I feel like sometimes it's used as a, you know, it's sort of a bargaining chip where the reality is that districts have some of that money. So I, it's a complex conversation. And I think some of this, some of this, as we know, some of this conversation around our funding level gets used as a battle axe on many levels, you know, whether it's teachers or employers or whatever. But I think it's important just to underline that it was kind of a long-term plan. And I know it's caused impact for teachers, I know for a lot of my faculty, you know, it's been challenging, but it was sort of gradual over time. And I think people have appreciated the fact that it was sort of well thought out over time and not a surprise. So, anyway.
Good, David, go ahead.
And the last thing I just want to highlight is, you know, we've been talking about, why is the unfunded liability going to increase a little bit before it starts going down, you know? We also have to understand, if you ever, if the decision, someone would ever say, let's reach for eighty percent funded, the amount of our unfunded liability will be increasing forever in time. Like it would be still a hundred and fifty billion dollar by two thousand and forty-six, you know? And then if you see the chart here, two hundred billion by two thousand and fifty-six, three hundred billion by two thousand and sixty-six, over four hundred billion dollar later. Myself, you know, I was worried that this could potentially become a real political risk at some point. Someone sees this ever-increasing amount of unfunded liability. That's why, you know, we believe, you know, that it's important that we, we reach full funding, you know, goes back to our mission as a system, you know, to secure the financial, you know, security of our, of our, of our members. So it all comes down to it. So this is sort of what I wanted to highlight. I would be more than answering any questions you have about the report, but this is sort of a, you can expect another discussion in, in November around our funding plan. And our plan, starting in November, in addition to have the kind of usual kind of risk-related discussion, we're probably going to start to bring to you, to try to get some feedback around, what kind of message do we want to have in our report to the legislature on the funding plan? Because I think our plan is, after the November item, is maybe bring a draft report to you in January, February, and then based on subsequent feedback, maybe come back with a final report in May, then submit it to, to the legislature. But for us, we've been spending a lot of time the last few months to kind of look at our current funding plan. It, it does work very well, but don't be surprised, I think we mentioned it last year in the report, if we, if we bring in front of you some ideas that could be brought to the legislature to make our funding plan even stronger, just some minor little tweaks. So we'll have that discussion in November.
So David, I, I think because I imagine that as more pressure is put on our members by their employers, that it's going to be really important that we really somehow make that whole increase, you know, that it's going to get bigger before it gets better, that story in very plain, understandable language when we send that to the legislature. And so maybe we can start working on that and, and, and I'll try to help you with that because, because I know what I need when I need to explain it to somebody. And I know Sharon talks about it too, so, and, and I'm sure Harry does too, so if we could do that, that would be great.
Yeah, perfect, we'll be ready. And we've been working with Grant and his staff also to try to come up with various one-pagers that kind of highlight some.
And I imagine they'll be reaching out to the constituency groups too, because they deal with it on a daily basis. Are there other, I have two people in line, if anybody has any other suggestions for David, let's get it to him now. And then we can refine that in November. So Paul?
Thank you, yeah, thanks. David, again, thank you very much for, you know, really excellent analysis. I, I certainly learned, I, I'd always thought that the big issue about sort of the eighty percent is, if we're eighty percent and then, you know, we have several years that are really bad, then we can drop way down and have a very difficult time recovering. I think you were emphasizing more the, the, the importance of just not looking at that number, but, but looking at that number in context in terms of what direction we're going, that we have a, we have a funding plan, whereas nine years ago, ten years ago, we were seventy-eight percent funded and we didn't have a funding plan, so we were actually in worse, in worse shape. But it does seem to me that, that the other, the other issue is just sort of the, the, the downside risk. If we get comfortable that we should just be at eighty percent, then the downside risk is, is much more acute than if we're at a hundred percent and we have the same kind of downside event. I mean, is, is that, I mean, how important is that?
That's very important, I totally agree with you. That's also, I think, and we did not highlight it specifically, but that is also something that, you know, if you aim for eighty percent and another oh-eight, oh-nine event comes, you know, we went from a hun, almost a hundred percent funded straight down to sixty over two years.
Right.
If the same thing happens, we would have gone from eighty to close to forty percent. And to recover from sixty versus forty is a, has a much bigger financial impact. So that is also another risk to, to keep in mind.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it is very important.
Sure. Because Grant and I have literally been emailing each other during this, during the last three days, because I do think we have some pretty good kind of one, two-pagers online right now. And the one I'm, the AB one, it's fourteen sixty-nine, there's a fact sheet that we have. And if you just, I mean, members can just look online at calstrs.com and Google funding or do the funding in the search. But I think some of those diagrams, because for some reason, the community college faculty in my, does, I have like a lot of math faculty and they just are always asking me about this. I'm always calling David. And I think, I think the graphs and some of the, to your point, kind of the, the, the lines that basically show that we're moving, you know, towards one hundred percent and where we would have been moving. I think making things really graphic and really easy to understand, to your point, Dana. But I think having things that our members can download easily from the website so that they can share, you know, the, the word out around the state of California. I think having tools like that for our members, because they're really our best, you know, they're, they're the ones who are really on the front lines with other, other teachers. So, and I would love to get feedback from stakeholders too, if, if, I guess, give it to Grant, give Grant the, the feedback. But with our shareholder meetings that we have, you know, or stakeholder meetings that we have, feel free to give us input on that, because we want to make those as helpful as possible. But I've been looking for those the last couple of days, so. Karen?
Thank you, David. And I'm going to just kind of piggyback on Sharon, so just, the, the graphs are helpful. Or if you can have some kind of examples perhaps, or just further explanations of what it really means and what are the impact, implications of those numbers?
Nora?
Yeah, so Grant and I have had conversations about this, but I think school board members across the state and administrators need to understand this a little bit better, because in the end, we're the, we're the ones making the decisions in partnership for the resource allocations of our budgets. And I've thought about like a cheat sheet, I like sort of, you know, one-on-one. There's a lot of information that's on our websites, but when you are elected official, sometimes it's hard to kind of navigate the process. If you are not a member of CalSTRS, you're not getting that information. So we've had a couple of conversations about how we get that out as well, so that people understand, and then maybe take it out on tour and let people know what's happening. It's just been a little hectic, but, but I think that, that's something that we can do in the coming months to share information.
And you know, so Grant, you know, to follow on Nora's, you know, I'm going to be a speaker at a school board meeting for CTA. So maybe that's something that you and I can try to get together before I have to do that presentation. And, and we can, maybe the three of us can do some conference calls and stuff.
Yeah.
All righty, cool, super. All righty. Jennifer, John, I don't know who is up first.
Hey, lady first.
Good job, John. Hey, Jen.
Thank you, John. Jennifer Baker, California Teachers Association. We appreciate the conversation you're having reviewing this item and would like to remind those that weren't around four years ago and then weren't around the past fourteen years. This was an item that was kicked around, and this was an item that CTA soundly rejected. And those that believe in retirement security for our members soundly rejected, because these discussions are not in the best interests of our educators, which is why the legislature and the governor said, this is not a prudent discussion. We need to make sure that we put together a comprehensive package that developed into AB fourteen sixty-nine. So we are somewhat concerned of the timing of why you're wanting to have this discussion. And we think that it could provide confusion for legislators and those that aren't familiar with the fact that this is an old idea that was rejected in the past. We would continue to reject this discussion in the future. We think what is happening is there is a manipulation of the facts, and it's being used as a bargaining tactic by education management groups and others that want to use pensions as a wedge issue regarding school finance. School finance is not a pension discussion. So you don't hear those same individuals saying, well, since we can't afford to fully fund special ed, let's reduce special ed to eighty percent of services. You don't hear that discussion. You don't hear a discussion about eliminating transportation because we're not funding it appropriately. You don't hear a conversation about shutting off the lights because we're not funding utilities appropriately. But somehow, when it comes to securing the trust and retirement security of our educators, people think this is an inappropriate discussion. And, and those that want to have that discussion need to understand it is simply a tactic to eliminate defined benefit, and that's how we will view the discussion. So we hope that we will use the vast amount of resources and information that you have to help the legislature and others that want to utilize pension security as a wedge issue in order to help to promote defined contribution. We hope that you will help to educate them as to what's really going on. The real issue is that we need to continue to support implementing and moving AB fourteen sixty-nine forward and stay the course while educating the legislator and others that weren't around for those discussions, that this is really about funding education appropriately. And even though we fully funded the local control funding formula, that does not mean in any sense of the case that we are providing adequate funds for public education. That is the real issue, and we need to make sure that people understand there are the apples and oranges discussion. Fortunately for you, and unfortunately for me, I'm the budget advocate, so I'm actually dealing with the fiscal side of those issues. And I can tell you that pension issues do come up, but unfortunately, it's by those that want to use it for alternative educational goals and alternative political goals. So we just need to make sure that we stick with the facts and make sure that people understand eighty percent discussion does not mean that you're going to have a secure pension, and we want to ensure that you're helping to promote those positive discussions.
So Jen, one of the, one of your questions was, you didn't understand why we're talking about it today. I want to let you know the impetus behind it. We have a very large section of our membership that is seeking legislation to change the percentage. So this is in direct response to that, and I appreciate the fact that you're there and, and you're going to, you know, you're going to be fighting for the same thing that we think is important, but it's in direct response to a threat that we felt was, could be credible.
And we believe that those threats are credible, which is why we would like to encourage your staff to work with us collaboratively, so we can work together to help to steer those conversations in a different direction.
John?
Hi, John Anderson, teacher member, CTA rep. Yeah, I'm worried too that this is undermining the whole process that, that we all worked on so hard and everybody gave so much input to throughout the years. There was so much good work put into the, to the plan that's been adopted by the state ledge, and lots of good options were developed through that time. And again, just, I don't want to see all that good work be undermined through this, through these current discussions. And I want to add, as a teacher member, to kind of back up with some of the board members have said about when you discuss the pension plan with other teachers, especially newer, younger teachers, when I get to tell them that we have a plan for fully funding, that resets their mindset of being, of a career, of having a career in the teaching profession, as opposed to looking at it as maybe a job for a while and walking away. It's so valuable, this pension plan. And again, if we try to sell it at sixty percent, seventy, eighty percent, what have you, for the long term, if that's the goal, that is a terrible direction to go in, that the teaching staffs will not, that, that will not reverberate into long-term, you know, planning for them. So again, the main point I just want to restate is just that, what I call a career-setting mindset. When you talk to the, to the teachers that are, that are beginning their careers, which I do a lot of, they really appreciate the, they don't know the history, but they appreciate the plan. And it's either a this or a that. Either the plan is really in place and fully funded, or it's not. And unfortunately, that's, you know, you have to have brief conversations, and that's what it comes down to a lot of times. And when you can share with them all the work that has gone on, gone into this and has put the plan in place, they really do appreciate that. And again, they know it's going to be there for the long run, and so therefore, they're going to be here for the long run, being teachers and making a career out of it. So I want to just emphasize that I hope we don't undermine all this work that we've done. Thank you.
At Folia CTA and they retired, really want to emphasize that, you know, when we came up with the plan, none of our retirees really benefited from any of that. So I can, I want to speak from an institutional standpoint and from our profession. Most of country across, dealt with the same issue of the unfunded liability in a different way than we. way than we did here in California. Now, we keep on forgetting that, because what they did is they take benefits away without collective bargaining or anything like that, they just took benefits away. Just ask a teacher in New Jersey what happened when they lost the battle. So we have a responsibility to make sure, because in 2046, if I'm still around, I'm 110 years old. But there's a lot of people that are coming into the profession, and they have all kinds of liabilities. But the one thing that they do now have, and the thing that we don't emphasize enough, a teacher is paying 10% of their salary into the fund. We're not getting a freebie, you know? So we're making the investment upfront, and that's hard for a new teacher to see 10% off your salary when you have a, you have to pay for your college loan and so on, and housing, and if you happen to live in the Bay Area, it's impossible, okay? So what we're saying here is, you know, let's not play the game of trying to use negotiations and our retirement, and try to put them together, because we're all making a darn effort to make it right. And I hope that we will not allow a group to make a wedge between us on something that's going to benefit the profession. And a teacher is a teacher, and they deserve a good, healthy retirement. So let's not back down. Thank you.
Pat Guyer, CTA retired, CRTA retired teacher. I just want to say, I definitely support holding this where it is. We're not getting that much, we're not getting rich as retired teachers in our pensions as they are, and if we cut it and we end up with no funds in the pension system, we're going to be in real trouble. So support it, please.
Thanks, Ed, thanks, Pat. All right. David, do you have anything you want to say to close us out?
No, we'll see you in November.
All righty, thanks very much. And I'm sure that we'll all work together to try to help you out. All righty, what I'd like to do next, is because we do have some board members that will be leaving, would be to go to our action item. We have two items on, we have two consent items that have multiple hearts, at least one of them does. So you have in front of you the committee reports, the ones that are just written to be included in our record are in front of you. There is one action item for the board, so I'd like to take nine A separately from nine B and C and D, and then I'd like to vote on item 10 when we do nine B, C, and D.
And you're going to come back to six at some point after that?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't want to lose a quorum for an action item.
Gotcha.
So I want to do all our action items, and then we'll go back to information.
Madam Sharon, she knows what she's doing. She's done this a few times.
Okay.
First rodeo.
So Sharon, you ready?
Sure.
Okay, hang on, let me get you in there.
No problem.
All righty, there you go.
By direction of the Benefits and Services Committee, I move to retain the existing policy and continue using the two-year U.S. Treasury notes as the basis for setting the defined benefit credited interest rate, and to amend the Board Policy Manual, Section 800, Benefits and Services Policy, to document historical decisions previously made by the Board regarding the minimum and maximum credited interest rates.
All right. That is our only action item before us right now, so we have a motion from the committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All righty, moving on. You do have a new board member education slip in front of your seat. Brian, there are some edits to the minutes. Do you want me to tell you what those are now? I, I probably should, so the board knows what we're voting on. So on TRB 95, this is our open session meeting, minutes. In the middle of that paragraph, Graham Finley's name is incorrectly spelled. If we could do that correctly, please. And then on TRB 97, when we do updates to the board member education, it's usually delineated in the minutes that that's been updated, so if we can just show that there was an updated, you can go back and look how we've done it in the past, but it just needs to show that it's been updated. And then the board is incorrectly spelled on D. I think the bard.
Shakespeare?
There you go, that's it. All righty. So then I would entertain a motion to approve nine B, C, D, and 10 as amended. It's been moved by Sharon, seconded by Karen. Were there any further comments? Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, thank you, Dana. All right, those have passed, so we've taken care of our action items on our agenda, we will go back to the informational items, number six.